Okay. Welcome, everybody. It is 6:40 PM on December 7, 2023, and this is the Selectman's Regular Meeting. Can I please have everybody stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. I apologize for the delay in the meeting. We had an executive session that was taking a little long, and I do sincerely apologize for taking your time. So first thing on the agenda, we have Glenda's Pub, Countryside Pub, Warren Package Store, responded to the letters from the Select Board about the ABCC. So... You have... What was that?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. So, thank you very much for coming. We have representatives from each of the... Glenda's?
Yep.
Warren Package Store.
Warren?
Countryside.
Countryside? Okay. Thank you for coming. As you know, we get notified by the state and of a violation that occurred on your facilities that is serving to a person under the age of 21 years old. You guys all had your hearings in Boston, and you hashed that out of Boston, and you're all given warnings for that. So, with that said, all we're here for is to identify what factors, what have you done to make sure that doesn't happen at your establishment anymore? We're not here to discipline you. That's already been done by the state. We're not here for that. We're just here to hear how have you strengthened your policies to make sure somebody doesn't get served in your establishment anymore? Who wants to go first?
I don't know.
So, just any time anybody talks, just identify who you are and where you're from, because we're on social media. We are on Zoom. It will also be on Facebook. It's also being done via WCAT 6, which is a local access network also, so you're on TV also. If anybody else is recording, please let us know, so we can let everybody else know. Okay? Did you have some?
No.
Glenda? Glenda's Pub.
How you doing?
All right. Yourself?
Good. So, you received the letter?
Yes.
It happened, and what have you done to make sure it doesn't happen again?
Well, we're all certified.
In what?
And... Sorry?
Certified in what?
By the TIPS certification.
TIPS? Okay.
Well, there's only two of us, actually. Bob plus Bob is certified too. And then we have these signs that we had made up. I don't know if I can get up there and show you.
Yes.
Sure.
Oh, okay.
Make it easier.
Yeah, my leg fell asleep. Plus, we have other signs, too.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so everybody...
Well, we have bigger ones, too, in the windows.
Although it looks backwards.
No, it's because we're the host.
Okay.
It'll be correct on the...
So, you see?
Okay.
I do have paper. I want to come everything that we have on, if you'd like to read. It's a couple pages long, if you want to read it, but that stuff that we have, you know...
If that's the state, right?
No, no. This is stuff that we applied with.
But that was for the state?
For the state, for the town, for, you know, it was one big mistake that happened.
Right.
Right.
So, you put up signs.
Uh-huh.
You've updated your training.
Well, yep.
So, you got your training up to date again.
Oh, we card everybody. We actually have a big sign in the window. We had ID, and the people that do walk in the door before they even ask IDs in.
Okay.
It was a busy night they sent her in, and she looked familiar. It was just, it was a crazy, yeah. It was a big accident.
Well, some of these people that they send in are gonna look 21.
Oh, and 40.
So, you gotta make sure that you're...
Oh, we do. Everybody, we don't know.
Carding everybody. Okay, thank you very much. Did you have anything else for us?
No, that's about it. I just need to get back to work.
Okay. Did you have any questions?
That was all that you got.
No.
Do you have any questions?
No questions, sir.
Mr. Ferrari?
No.
Okay. I'm good. Are you good?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, and thank you for putting up signs and getting up to date on your training.
Oh.
And no more.
No.
No. Never again.
No.
Well, ultimately, right, if you get shut down by the ABCC, it's bad for the town, it's bad for your business.
Right.
So, please, you know...
And believe me, if they get you once, they're probably gonna be sending some people again right after. So, expect to have some spot visits coming up soon.
Glenda, you don't need to stay.
Oh, okay, well, he wants to stay.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Who wants to go next?
Jiten Patel from Warren Package Store.
How you doing, sir?
I'm good.
So, what are you doing to make sure it doesn't happen in your store again?
Yeah, so I made all the employees to go through the certification with each and every employee.
So, in your case, this is your second warning?
Yes.
Yeah, it said one prior in the letter here.
One prior.
So, this is the second time in your store that this has happened?
Correct.
And, again, you know, be aware. They're probably gonna make sure that they can get somebody else in there and buy again, and I don't think they're gonna give you a warning again if that happens, but... So, what are you doing besides the TIPS training? To make sure...
I upgraded my Fila system, so every customer comes in, scanning your driver's license, and will just tell if sell or do not sell.
Okay. So, what did it actually say? What's it display?
The display would say do not sell.
Do not sell?
But if it's like overage, the travel system will open.
You scan everybody?
Most probably everyone, yes.
Anyone that looks under 40?
Yes, maybe.
Are you doing anything else other than...
It's a heavy fine, and we cannot, like, it's a small business, so not easy to survive. So, everybody is, like, strictly informed that do not sell if they don't have ID.
So, what the state did is separate from us?
Right.
We were just alerted that it happened, so it was concerning to us because a third of our establishments in town all got grabbed.
Grabbed, yeah.
So, that's very concerning for us.
And you can assume everybody else probably got tested, right?
Yeah, they probably went to everybody, yeah. And it'll probably go through again soon.
It did came out after also. I caught it.
Oh, you did?
Oh, yeah. It came in, like, after that, they came in about three times.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay.
They're sending, like, random kids.
Oh, yeah.
Don't have a license, we just check them.
Okay. Just so you're aware, the town can also have somebody go in and do it also separate from them, but with us, it would be for your license. Okay? Because we're the licensing authority.
Correct.
Okay? And, you know, what the state does is separate, and they can shut you down, but also, if the board were to do that...
Correct.
We could also not renew your license. Okay? But we would use our own people to do that. So, be aware of that.
Sure.
Do you have anything else to add, sir?
Sure.
Other than that, thank you for doing business in our town, and we want to see you guys succeed. We want you to do well.
Absolutely.
We just don't want you to...
Absolutely.
Have these issues. Do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Alicia Rollin, Countryside Pub. So, I was issued a warning, and after that, I had, I very strictly educated everybody there that is an employee that we will be requiring IDs if there's any shadow of doubt. Obviously, we have a lot of regulars, so they're not gonna ask for IDs from those people every single time that they're in there if they know that they're overage, but if there's any shadow of doubt, they absolutely have to ask for ID, no exceptions. I've had several acquaintances of mine that are unknown to the employees to go in and make sure that they were being asked for ID, and I also have somebody there that I have working in kind of a management role now, so that he can physically be there and keeping an eye on things more than I can just due to my other work obligations.
Okay. So, you basically did your own audit?
Correct.
By sending your own people in?
Yes.
And how did they do?
They did great. They were as Friday, yes.
They're doing what they're supposed to do?
Yes.
I'd like to say that's awesome.
It is.
Kudos to you, and you guys, too. I mean, you might wanna think about that, you know, grab somebody you know who's young and send them in.
Not underage, though.
Yeah.
Because you don't wanna break the law.
No, no, that's true.
But you wanna make sure that your people are doing...
Yeah, and if you...
Well, it's just you two, so...
Right.
But still, it's a good, it's a good test, 'cause if you, you know, if you keep it up, test every once in a while on your own, right, you'll be on top of it. So, I think that's great. That's awesome.
It's great to have the software, too, that you scan the ID, and it tells you right away, don't sell. That's very good to have.
Yep.
And do you have signs up at all?
Yes, I do.
Well...
Oh, yes.
You have signs posted?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Do you have any other questions?
No. No. Very encouraged.
No questions.
Lisa Ferrari, do you have... Okay. One second. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming in. Before you go, though, just keep in mind that we take these things very concerning, okay, when it's happening in our community, because, again, nobody wants, you guys don't wanna serve anybody underage, and we don't want you to serve anybody underage. The last thing we want you to do is you lose your licenses within the town, so you can't do business here anymore because of something like that. So, use your vigilance, make sure you card everybody, even question it, card them, and I think the law states anybody that looks under 40 years old, you have to card.
Is that a fly?
No flies.
He likes me. So, just make sure you're doing your due diligence, great effort, you know, spot checking your people, and continue that work. Ms. Condrat, you had a question?
No, I have... I'd like to point out that the G10 establishment, they do random checks on their employees.
They have you ready?
I got carded.
Oh, yeah.
Don't you feel better now? You look like you might be under 40.
Do I look like I'm not 21?
23.
You know something, Joe? I'd card you, too.
But it is important.
It's good.
It doesn't matter who you are, and let's face it, they don't. However, when it comes to out-of-state licenses, they may not have the barcode.
My God, Joe. You have a fake ID?
No, that was the...
I don't know. I wouldn't serve that guy. Wow, look at that. Nice mustache.
Very handsome.
All right. What was that, like, a few months ago?
God, it was.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Condrat, on that. We appreciate your time. I apologize for the inconvenience, and just do what you're supposed to do from now on. Just keep in mind, we might be sending people in, too, so, to do some spot checks.
Now, the other thing is... Knowing that West Warren has two clubs, clubs mean membership. They gave you a membership card, and say, like, with the Eagles Club, you have a key card to get in.
They weren't open when that happened, though.
No.
Those clubs weren't open when the buzz happened.
The thing is...
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for coming.
If you come from another club, you'd have to...
Good night.
Buzz, the buzzer, somebody would let you in, and then they would ask you to see your club membership card. And it's not that you're not a member of the club, it's that you might come from another club. The membership card tells them you're old enough to drink. If you don't have a card, you end up signing a book, which basically says you're old enough to drink. They can hold you for perjury.
Well, thank you very much for that, Mr. Condrat.
Okay. So, Whiskey Hill Liquors? There was four.
Yeah. They... So, I'm gonna put them on next week.
Okay.
And she also got the card scanner, and, you know, she's not quite there.
Okay.
So, they're, yeah, they're next week.
So, Whiskey Hill will be next week. Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on, discussion and approval and signing final report for Commonwealth of Mass Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, ABCC, and 2024 seasonal population increase estimate form anticipated vote. Okay?
And this just says, this form just says that you did not deny anybody, that nobody did not, nobody was disapproved, and nobody failed to renew. So, I just need signatures on it.
All right.
So, you just send in this blank thing?
So, motion to approve it? You good? Any questions?
That's...
There's two pages, right?
Yeah. This is this one. What this one is, is that just as our population doesn't change, we don't have an influx of a bunch of summer people coming in.
Okay. We're not a Martha's Vineyard.
Okay. So, what was the motion?
Oh, we can do a motion now. We held it off, so...
Oh, okay.
If you wanna do a motion.
All right. Make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve and sign the final report to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Alcohol Beverages Control Commission and the seasonal population increase estimate form.
Second?
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Any other? Okay. So, that's discussion for the 2023, well, February 23...
No, 2023. It shouldn't have been, sorry. 2324 Annual Review.
Discussion for the 2023 and 24 Annual Review by the town's IT provider, Northeast IT, with a possible vote to sign new monthly IT service agreement anticipated vote. Now, this is the one we tabled last time, because we were looking for Mr. Valles to come in with his knowledge, because you had some concerns with the IT a little bit?
Well, yes, but my biggest concern is that we don't have anything to compare to, you know, the service that we are getting. I do, I, we do manage at work this kind of thing, where you have emails, you have a server, and personally, I feel it's a little too high, so maybe if we look for other companies and get some prices, because, you know, we may get some savings. And also, we were at a meeting with them. I thought it was gonna be in person here, but no, they did it on Zoom, and I asked for a couple reports, and, you know, the reports were not very satisfactory, you know, to really see what they are doing. You know, it's kinda like, you can't see through the lines of what's really happening. I asked for a report of all the incidents where people from the town ask help, to see how many hours they're really working for us, but it didn't look very clear to me.
Oh, that's interesting. Well, it'd be good to note, break out the cost. Like, we know this EDR...
EDD.
EDD, or whatever it is, right, is very expensive. So, fine, so take that out, what's left, and, you know...
You know.
Are they doing support calls, or, you know...
They look like very stretched to me, you know. I, it doesn't describe what the call was or what the problem was or the issue, but you could see it was like, you know, two hours, three hours.
Just one second. Explain the acronym you just used.
What is it?
End Point Detection.
Yeah, but it's a three-letter, isn't it?
That's the EDD.
Yeah. End Point Detection.
EPD, right?
End Point Detection.
Okay.
EPD.
EPD, yeah.
So, I just thought, oh, here's a thing.
Fly again.
A fly?
I knock it down a little bit.
Not enough. It's a big one.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so...
So, he made a cameo.
I just think that there's room for improvement and for savings. You know, that's the only thing I can say, you know. I do manage emails, too. I do manage servers, and we pay for them. I mean, I know we're a town, and we get a little extra hit for that, but we don't really know how much other companies charge.
So, this is a monthly agreement, right?
Correct.
So, it's not locking us into anything?
Well, you can cancel this up to 60 days prior to the start of this contract, so...
And when is the start of the contract?
July 1 of 2024.
Oh, so we don't need to sign this tonight?
You don't need to. They're, the company's obviously have been requesting it. I think it should be something that, you know, maybe the board should start thinking about. You know, one suggestion to accommodate Selectman Valles, and I think he's made some great points, you know, I have been approached by a vendor that's on the state bid list that is interested, bid ahead, that is interested in providing us with some quotes, but they would need, you know, to, you know, look at what our system is, to quote it, you know, correctly. If the board would like that to happen, I'm sure I could, you know, get that done within the next, you know, month or so.
Yeah, I think, given ourselves options, see if we can get it cheaper somewhere else so we can save the town some money, I think that's a good idea.
We have six months to think about it, so...
Right.
I would say so.
You know, in the interim, you know, I do know that I do get quite a few emails from various departments when they do have troubleshooting problems, and they are, Northeast has been responsive to those. Northeast was out again this, just this week to provide us with the updated laptop for our new veterans agent that started this week, and to do some upgrades for some of the computers in the building. So, I will be able to provide some additional information to the board in, you know, in, you know, in the next month or so, maybe a little bit longer because of the holidays, but, you know, I will reach out to some other companies.
Okay. Very good. Now, you good with that, Mr. Valles?
Yeah, I'm good. Like, you know, we could even be wrong. They're doing a very good service with a good price, but we don't know at this point.
We don't know.
Okay. We can just table this if you don't mind.
Yeah. We'll reach out.
Tell further notice?
Hold on.
No, I was asking if that's... We're gonna table it to a date.
Oh. No, we'll just give you time to figure it out. Is Rich okay?
He needs a little love.
Haven't heard a loud boom.
That's why... There you go.
As long, as long as he keeps doing that, we'll... Do you have any water?
Yeah, he's got water.
He has water.
Okay.
Is he coming back?
You know he's breathing if he's coughing.
I'd like to get his input on before we move forward, so...
This is what it triggered me, a soft curve. Usually, we are like...
Think graph.
You know? Why in summer?
You okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
You good?
Yeah. Where's the fly?
Did you swallow the fly?
No, I think I got him out.
So, we're gonna, if it's okay with you, we talked about tabling this to give...
Yeah.
Time, because a vendor was approached, Mr. Ferrari. See if we can get it cheaper, same quality, see what product we can get from another vendor.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay. So, we'll table that until you get the information.
Next year.
We'll go from there.
Yeah, table it till next year.
Yeah, it will be. All right. Moving on, Assessors' Office request for petty cash anticipated vote, and... So, we're looking at doing $50 in petty cash toward, to the assessors, and this is for what?
It's a new one. It's a new petty cash.
I would imagine it's from...
Postage.
The stamps and stuff?
Postage, yeah.
Okay.
They had petty cash before?
No.
Well, they didn't? Okay.
Well, they do mailings, and they need stamps and stuff, $50, and I know this money is being watched very closely now, so... You good? You have any questions about it?
No.
I'm good.
Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Do a motion?
All right. I'll make a motion to authorize the Assessors' Office to have petty cash in the amount of $50.
Second?
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay. Next agenda item, Leona Rubel, Senior Center Work Off Abatement Application for fiscal year 2025?
Yeah, next year. She's gonna start in January.
Fiscal year thing always gets me.
I know. I double check.
We're not even in '24 yet.
I double checked to make sure that I put it in there correctly with Betty Johnson.
Okay. So, it's for 2025?
Yep.
But is it, what are we in? We're in FY '24.
2024, yeah.
So, this is not right.
Yes, it is.
Because FY '25, she'd have to start in July.
No, she, she works in from, it goes from December. See, and this is where it gets confusing.
Goes by calendar year?
It goes by December to November to do the work. Then you get it taken off in February of twenty-five.
So December of now until November of twenty-four, okay.
And then it comes off of the January bill of twenty-five.
So she has all from two thousand twenty-four to work it off.
And she is our only one that we have, that hasn't asked to do it.
Okay. She meets all her criteria, and it's for the seven fifty, and for the fifty hours. There's no date?
I know, I looked for that.
She didn't know if I should date it, she didn't know she should date it when she gave it to me, or dated the date that you guys approved it.
Well, it was the date that she applied for, right?
Yeah.
And then we, we dated the, then it starts from.
Okay, so the date she applied for it was, just a minute. The twenty-second, eleven twenty-two.
Okay, do you get the original one?
Just the original one. She didn't put a date on it.
I know, we can just put it in.
She's not here. So do you want me to have her date it?
Uh, yeah, just have her date it, the date that she put, applied for it.
Okay.
Because that has nothing to do with the date that we vote.
Yeah, she just, you know, she did it last week, so, the sixth.
Okay. So I'm good with it, working it. You good, and you have any questions?
Yeah, the only thing is the withholding of tax. Now, she's gonna earn under six hundred, so in this case, it's okay. Is this, this is our form, obviously, right?
Mm-hmm.
So you might wanna have on here somewhere just that, you know, taxes will be withheld for amounts over six hundred dollars.
Okay.
Just so they know, right?
Yeah.
I mean, we talked about someone who just earned seven fifty, and they might not understand, and they expect seven fifty, so.
So, add that to it.
Anything over six hundred is taxed now?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, there's withholding.
It ends up being like fifteen dollars.
Yeah.
So probably at the end there on that paragraph.
And do you want me to have her re-sign it then, after I add that?
Now, do we give him a W two for that?
No, because she's under six hundred.
Yeah.
So it's if you earn six hundred or over.
She won't be, that's, that's incorrect.
Yeah, I would, I would just keep it very generic, saying that, you know, you know, federal taxes would be applicable. You know, the appropriate federal taxes would be applicable.
And withholding, 'cause that's, 'cause their amount is gonna get reduced by, plus they may get a tax hit, right?
Yeah, there's, there's no, there's no state tax, income tax.
Right.
Federal taxes would be applicable.
Just federal tax, yeah. All right, I'll add that to it.
Okay.
So you're gonna update the form, and we don't sign that, just they do.
No, you just, I make a memo.
All right. Are you good with her participating?
Oh, yeah.
Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Leona Robel for the citizen, senior citizen work off abatement program for F Y twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye, the motion passes unanimously. Okay, next thing on the agenda, acceptance of a gift of an oil painting from the family of Shepherd Blair, anticipated vote. Is that what you're here for tonight? Very good, all right. What do we have? You have a painting?
We have a painting.
What is it?
I believe I showed you one letter you received.
Okay.
Oh, you don't have it in person, huh?
Uh, it's hanging already.
Oh, no, okay.
Not carried around in my back pocket.
Come on now!
On, on the page, you'll see the chart.
You had an additional page, yes, and here's an additional bit of info about. He was an anti-slavery person, very active, and so was his wife in the
Thank you.
pre-Civil War times, so within eighteen fifty's to sixty's and seventies, ten eighties, he died in eighteen eighty-three. At any rate, it's a really nice painting, it's a really nice gift to receive a person who was active in Warren and respected for the things he did.
There you go. And so everybody knows who you are, you're Miss Sylvia Buck.
Oh, I'm Sylvia Buck, how do you do?
And with Historical Commission, right?
Yes. So we have it hanging in the Historical Commission room.
Okay.
Which I, and I hope to have a little open house sometime, not too far, just in the future, for the public to come, make a little big deal about it, to show them what we have received as a town.
Very good.
It's a very nice gift.
Yeah, it's very nice.
So the, is the family in the area still?
They're from, well, the donor who represented the family came from Sidsbury, Connecticut. I do not know where the rest of her relatives are, but it involved about twelve relatives. Her siblings and their children, and, you know, aunts and uncles and all this, all to agree to let it go out of the family. And I kind of encouraged them to say, it would be nice to let Shepherd Blair come back to Warren, where he worked himself.
Very nice.
Sylvia, where is the painting?
In the Historical Commission room.
This is?
Which is on the second floor at the far end of the East Hall.
Very good, I like, so everybody can hear that.
So everybody knows where you're at.
Thank you for asking. We will have, we are having a meeting tonight, as soon as we get out of here, I posted it for seven o'clock. And we will be having another meeting in about a month.
Sylvia?
I'll try to schedule a clock on a time.
May I have your permission to take a picture of the painting?
Yes.
Thank you.
But I was gonna run the publicity, if you don't mind.
Oh, that's okay.
I did give you one of these, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm.
I'll send you the picture later.
Okay, thank you. You can have the picture for yourself, but I plan to have a photographer come in or ask about whether men have.
I'll try to do my best, promise.
I expect you'll do very well.
He is a photographer too, so.
Yes, I know that. But I meant for the newspaper, a newspaper, maybe two.
Do you have any questions, sir?
No, I don't.
Just making.
The flag again, it's time.
Do you have any more questions?
No, sir.
Do you have anything, Mr. Farrar?
Yeah.
Do a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the oil painting from the famili, family of Shepherd Blair.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye, the motion passes unanimously. And thank you very much, Mrs. Buck, and great work, and I look forward to seeing it.
Yes, it took over a year's negotiation, not too difficult, but to keep in touch with these people and everything. The mother's apartment in New York, and all the family had to have access to the various parts of her estate before it could be let go.
Very good.
Very lucky.
Very good, thank you very much.
All right. Do you have my next letter in your location there?
Yeah.
Yep.
And review communication from the Warren Historical Commission. And... So with this, can you please explain what you want to do?
It's asking for the support of the representatives of the town for our, applying for the National Register recognition. National Register is more of a status thing than anything else. It doesn't call for any requirements, it doesn't have anything else attached to it except the possibility of recognition, well, it will be recognized by the state first, and then go to the national body which examines these things. They read, the nomination is about fifty pages long, up last I knew, I think it was growing, I had to read them. It's based on the updated survey form that is now posted on MACRIS, M A C R I S, which is Massachusetts Cultural and Information website under MassGov. So if you go to MassGov and ask for MACRIS, M A C R I S, and then ask for Warren, and then category is cemeteries, eventually you'll find our updated form, which started out with five pages and is now fifty-five pages. What we did was we expanded not only to include information on this very old cemetery, and, and some of the research on it, but to also include the neighborhood in which it was set. Because we asked ourselves, what is this cemetery doing way out here when the town centered, in the Center Village, as it was called, and had its larger cemetery down here? Well, initially, apparently, it started out as a family cemetery, as so many of them do. That this gentleman who owned the property had a niece who died young, thirty, in her mid to late thirties. She'd separated from her husband, we think, very complicated, undiagnosed situation. But at any rate, she died and she needed a place to be buried, and he said, oh, yeah, sure, you can put her out in my two hundred and forty-five acres. Well, the cemetery is much smaller than that, I forget whether it's two acres, three, three aughts, I think. There are forty-six burials in it. We investigated those names and found that some had no reason that we could find for being buried there. They lived there, they lived just over the line in Brimfield, they were part of the community in South Warren. When one went, he wanted to be buried there, or she, and then they put the rest of the family. On occasion, they took one of the family back and put her in Pine Grove Cemetery, where the parents were later buried. Very complicated. But at any rate, our, our story of the neighborhood and all the people who lived around included a number of people who served the town as selectmen, as you think of some of those other positions?
Militia, postmasters.
Yeah, oh, yes, postmaster, yes.
Uh, there was a lot of, and then there was a church up there that, a lot of prominent members are buried in that cemetery, a universalist church.
I'm asking Tom Perkins, who did a great deal of the research, that made that initial upgrading of our information. And he, he researched it, I wrote it, we supplied it to the planner, who rewrote it, and so on. At any rate, now she's using that material for the National Register nomination. And they usually like to think that the town is behind us on doing this, so that's why they're asking for a letter of support.
So this is for the South Warren Cemetery?
Mm-hmm.
And you got graves dating back to seventeen seventy-three in there?
Well, that's the one that got moved, uh, that, let's say, she's also recognized in Pine Grove, so we're not sure if she's still there. Did you know you can have markings on two different cemetery stones? One here and one there, where are you?
Keep the people guessing.
There are also some graves that are not marked. Either the stones have been buried over time in the sod, or stolen, or never were there in the first place. But we have recognized stones, and then depressions in the ground between two stones.
And we just don't know who is there?
Nope, and goodness knows we have searched all the records that are available up to now. But anyway, that's all we know, forty-six known burials.
Now, didn't Cemetery just do some work over there, they cleaned it up a little bit?
They were very helpful, and when the tree was removed, after the stump was ground, they left a lot of sawdust on the ground. The highway department came and cleaned that up, they spread, he's stomping on a fly, it makes a lot of stumps.
Oh, my God, this thing's like.
He won't die.
And I still didn't get him!
Gone, no, it's there.
It's an indestructible fly, stomped on him like ten times.
He has a microphone.
Yeah, he's, he's watching it.
It's a spy.
Fly on steroids. Well, thank you very much.
I forgot what I was saying, but that's probably enough for you to know.
Well, thank you very much, and Cemetery, have you gone to them yet about this?
Who?
The Cemetery Commission?
Oh, yes, they were aware of what we're doing, yes.
Okay, all right.
In fact, they have been very aware of, oh, I was trying to say, that the highway department was really, really helpful. They came up with a forklift, padded forklift, mind you, for lifting some of the heavier stones. Not every stone has been moved, or repaired, or conserved, or improved. Some, a stark has been made. So, uh, some money has been spent by professional conservators, who surveyed the whole situation, all the stones, and does a step-by-step process on any stone that they handle.
Very good.
Or after.
All right. Um, do you have any questions, sir?
I do.
Yeah?
So, is the cemetery closed for any further burials?
Uh, the last burial there was in eighteen fifty-two.
Fifty-two, that's what I wanna say.
I think.
So if you wanted to be buried there, you could be, if you.
I think that would be up to the Cemetery Department.
Okay.
So the last one occurred in eighteen fifty-two.
Is that where it's in there?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, good.
You did say. Read the letter.
No, I'm more interested in whether you could be buried there if you want.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, no other questions.
Nothing? Is this like something you plan on, you assume you're gonna bury there? Right, you're a little long, 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 like? We need you. Do you have any questions, sir?
Sylvia, completely support as a board member.
Thank you.
Where do I sign?
Oh, my God, will you let us get to it?
She has a meeting.
A letter, yes, a letter of support.
Mr. Farrar, you have something?
Uh, Sylvia, uh, they made what I have explained to the board, like you were explaining to me when we met earlier this week about the, the adverse possession and ownership questions that you may wanna.
Okay, that's in here too.
Yes, the the history of the cemetery, which Tom was able to research very diligently, he's, he's a good researcher, but you can't have it, he's mine!
All right.
There was, the burials pre-eighteen hundred, but in eighteen one or six, the property was sold, all except the cemetery portion. They just ignored that, they sold all the property around it. And in one of those deeds, it mentions that one of the bounds is the old cemetery. So it officially, in a record, says, yes, they knew the cemetery was there, by referring to it that way. Over the time, caring for the cemetery has sometimes been mentioned in town reports and sometimes not. I looked up every single town report that was printed since eighteen forty, and I found in eighteen eighty-seven, reference to Samuel N. in eighteen eighty-seven, reference to Samuel N. Gleason paid for labor and material for stone fence at South Warren Cemetery. And then later on, late other years, it would mention or not mention the cemetery, the South Warren Cemetery, as we cared for in a separate way, they just reported on cemetery care.
So I know we maintain it.
Yes. And I don't think you would maintain something that was privately owned. There are, there is one other area of two lots of children's burials on private property that I know of in town, that there were gravestones there at one time. But anyway, you don't, you don't do stuff to private property. But if you question the ownership, as we did of just Attorney McCallie, he examined all the research that Tom had done, which was expensive, let me tell you. In fact, Mr. McCallie wrote that he spent about ten hours following through on all that research, and even thought of one other thing for himself to research. He did this pro bono, and we were lucky to have him do it. He said he couldn't find any difference in what we had found, that is not mentioned officially being transferred, but that it's been cared for, quite a time. So he said, based, he referred to this adverse possession clause, based on what is known about the history and usage of the South Warren burial ground, including the control and maintenance of said premises by the town for well in excess of one hundred years, the town of Warren can claim ownership of the South Warren burial ground by adverse possession. In order to sustain a claim for adverse possession, a party must show an actual, open, exclusive, and adverse possession of the land in excess of twenty years under Massachusetts law. It is my opinion that the town can meet those requirements. And as I said, it was mentioned in the eighteen eighty-seven town report, probably some others too, but I found that that are all.
So with that, is this something KP Law should be looking at?
Well, the, it's my understanding, there's no clear deed that the town has to ownership of the cemetery. It has been, it has been, you know, documented that the town has maintained it for quite some time. And Attorney McCallie had indicated that, you know, the town could meet that threshold of an adverse possession, but the town would have to take it to land court or get a judgment in favor of this adverse possession claim.
So it's probably okay the way it is, but it would be more secure if we did it that way?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't know if, if the historical commission, if the town was to write, if we were to write a letter in support of this, if that, if this historical commission would be under the assumption that the town has legal rights to the property. I don't know, I can't see that the town has legal rights to the property.
So how do we get legal rights to it done? If we, if we know this is something, we've been maintaining it for a hundred years, we call it the West, yeah, the...
South.
South Warren Cemetery, you know, let's make this legal to make sure that we can.
I'll tell you what, I've lived with this for three, four years maybe, this same question. And I've talked to a great many people about it. Mr. McCallie said, if you wanted to do so, you would have to track the last known owners of the property. Trying to think, what was his first name? Hitchcock?
Hitchcock, John Hitchcock.
Say again?
John Hitchcock.
John Hitchcock, well, his son Rufus? No.
His son Luke inherited that.
His son Luke settled his father's estate, which included many, many, many acres, I don't know, two-hundred-and-forty-six or two-hundred-and-sixty-five, whatever. He sold that property, which I mentioned, to you, except he just ignored that the cemetery was there. He sold this piece, and that piece, and this piece.
So he still owns it, well.
So, I was told that if you wanted to establish who last owned it, you would have to look for Luke Hitchcock's descendants, which could go into the tens of thousands. And the cost for it would be in the ten-thousand range. So that kind of put it out of our reach. So that's when I went to McCallie and said, you know, how do we, how do we look at this now? It's not possible for us to research from eighteen oh-one or eighteen-six, whatever was, he sold that property. We don't have the capability of, what's it called, the court officer that's...
Title examiner.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. He would have to be hired, gave much dollars, who would run a lot of money, and it's just not possible. So then I looked at, well, what have we been doing about this cemetery property? Have we been ignoring it? Have we been caring for it? Well, you don't care for my property, you don't care for Tom's property, you don't care for property you don't think you own, so that's where we're standing.
So our next step would be, I would say, have KP Law look at this and see if we can do this adverse possession, and, because we've been maintaining it for so long, and if we could do that, make that official, you know, whether it goes to land court or whatever.
Yeah, there's two ways, land court and registry.
Superior Court.
I think, I don't remember Attorney McCallie mentioning Superior Court, but maybe you heard it from somebody you knew?
He used to work at the courthouse.
It's either land court or Superior Court, I believe.
I'll look it up, I'll...
You could go, you could file it in either court, I believe.
Uh-huh, okay.
Depending on, you know, what route you think you'd make.
Oh, registered land or recorded land is what McCallie said.
Right. That's just where you would get it, recorded.
Two ways to file a deed, yeah. And first you have to get a deed.
Right.
And how do you get a deed?
Through the courts, yeah.
So you'd have to go to court with...
For property you've been caring for for over a hundred and fifty years.
Yeah, I mean, you'd want to, the town would want to look at, you know, trying to, I mean, I think the town has a very strong case, you know, for this, you know, based on the information that, you know, Attorney McCallie had provided, I think it's very strong. But it's going to take some time and some money to do that, to get that, you know, you know.
You're probably going to have to go to the town and request...
Money.
Money.
Yeah.
At a meeting, annual town meeting, to dedicate for this, the research and processing of it.
When speaking with Ben Haley at Massachusetts Historical Commission about the situation, and his predecessor also talked with me about it, they said, you can do this, you can get the National Register listing at the state level, you can get approval at the state level without worrying about the ownership matter. It's at the federal level that it might come up, but...
Yeah, but I don't, I, I would love to support it, and I think it's great to support, but I don't know if we could do that if we don't own it. Because if somebody comes back and says, no, it's been my property the whole time, and I don't know why the town's been on my property.
The reason that is required in most private property situations is just that somebody could come along and say, well, Jim over here's been parking his car on my yard, right over the line, and I want it out, you know, I want that established and all. That would be more in the private property situation. So when you're talking about, who wants a cemetery? Who wants to claim? I have heard from the conservators who have worked with a great many private and public cemeteries, they ran into one situation where it turns out the cemetery was indeed owned by two sisters, who, when notified, were quite alarmed, what, we own a cemetery? No, you can have it, we don't want a cemetery.
Well, it might just become, become something like that, where it makes it easy, and they just say, no, we don't want nothing to do with it, there you go.
But, don't forget, there's a hundred and fifty years of possible relatives.
Well, since eighteen oh-one, you're looking at two-hundred-and-twenty-two years.
A navy gap, a navy gap, a navy gap.
May I speak up for a second, Sylvia?
Yes.
If an owner shows up, present them with the back taxes. If an owner shows up, present them with the back taxes and see if they still want it.
Oh, well, there you go. Brilliant.
That, that's an option. You owe us two-hundred-and-twenty years, twenty-two years of back taxes. Pro read. Mr. Conrad?
Could I suggest going to the assessor's office and seeing if one of those plots...
Oh, I did already! And they said, oh yes, we own it, and they dialed up their, their website, which showed all the property and who owns it and all this. Really, they, I said, really, the town owns it? When did that occur? Oh, it says nineteen sixty. Oh, really? I said, could you find me the deed? So they went to the cement room and they got out the deed file of papers, and we could not find any such deed. So I already been there. I told you, I've been living with this for a number of years.
So yeah, we're going to have to research it and figure out, yeah?
Have to do a title search.
Yeah, we're going to have to get money at town meeting to do that, because we don't have anything allocated to do that type of research. So we'd have to request it at town meeting and then legal fees to, to establish a deed for us under this adverse possession. Paul, you know, long.
Yeah, that down is our first ATM request.
What was that?
It's our first ATM. Oh, second now?
Yeah.
Barely after the STM, we're already going for it.
Well, it doesn't take long.
Maybe have it start on the computer.
Yeah, I'd love to see it go into the historical...
National Register, that's what you're trying to think of.
The National Register, I'd be good, I'd be good with that.
I am.
I'd preserve it. We just need to own it.
Yeah.
Let's get ownership of it and go from there. Would you be willing to go in front of the town for an annual town meeting and tell them why we need the money?
Would you support requesting it from the nomination?
To nominate it?
The, the National Register nomination is what they call the paperwork to go with this.
Yeah.
So if you would support it...
We don't own it, but I, I don't see why we can't say we want to preserve it, and we, we support the nomination. I support the nomination.
Yeah.
I already said that.
I know you did, but I'm just following up with you, I didn't know if you changed your mind in the past fifteen seconds.
Yes, twice.
He's busy chasing flies.
I got it.
He finally got it, too.
He got it. I think it's a spy. It's a mini drone.
It's a, it's a spy fly.
Spy fly.
So there's nothing holding us up from accepting the nomination, or...
No, I mean, if...
Support the nomination?
If one of the state agencies or federal agencies were to contact the town, you know, they may question whether or not who's owner owns the property. That's the only thing I would caution the board.
Yeah, we're trying to figure that out.
Yeah.
So, let's, let's do, it would have to come from you guys, from historical, the article.
Would you like me to supply a sample letter of support?
Sure, yes, yes, yeah. Yeah, but, you know, I think you got all our support on it.
Okay.
We have no problem, we'll support it.
So if I, if I, well, I could write it out, if you want to sign it, that would...
I'll sign it.
Okay.
Be careful when you're signing there, you.
Everything for Sylvia.
Whatever Sylvia wants?
Yes.
Title to your house?
Yeah. I don't have a house.
No, you got our support on it, Sylvia, and...
Hey, I'll submit a letter then.
We'll look at doing an article to get money dedicated to doing a title search, and...
But since the nomination is already to be submitted, you'd be good with providing the letter of support to go with the nomination? It's time, time concerned. Okay.
No, we can do that.
All right, thank you.
But we still got to make sure that we clarify who owns it, and if, if established that we have legal right to this property, because now you kind of...
Otherwise, I'm going to take my flagpole back.
Yeah, you opened up a can of worms there, it's like, wait a second, we don't own it?
Yeah, that was a big surprise when we discovered that.
Well, believe me, we're being told that we own things and we don't own things, that we, over the years, we just recently, over the past year or so, been told that we own the levee system for the mill complex. And the Corps of Engineers was gracious enough to let us know that we owned it during an inspection.
Oh, that's nice.
And they're like, what have you guys done to maintain it all this time? We didn't even know we owned it!
Yeah. Did they prove that?
Yeah.
Oh yeah.
They have the deed.
They have the deed.
Yeah, they didn't lose that deed.
Yeah. Yeah, we own that. I wish we did.
Well, if you'll excuse me, then I'm going to go lead a Historical Commission meeting.
All right. Well, thank you very much, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, discussion on FY twenty-five budget guidelines for all departments anticipated vote. Okay, Mr. Farrar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we discussed at our last meeting, the board approved our budget calendar, and along with our budget calendar, I would like to send out some guidance to departments. I know we talked about it at our last meeting, you know, and maybe you need another week or so to think about it, and that would be fine, we could get it out next week. But, you know, to setting up to some, some level of guidance in terms of whether the board would like to see departments formulate their budgets on, you know, level services, you know, possibly a one percent increase, possibly a two percent increase. I know last year, we were talking about this for the budget season, you know, the board liked the idea of, of level services, but gives the department some flexibility to adjust for some inflation, which I thought was very smart, and, and I think that's what we came up with ultimately in FY twenty-four. So, you know, I'd just like to see where the board would like to be at, so that we could send those directives out to the department heads, and so that they're clear as to how they should start formulating their budget. We had also talked about, you know, possibly drafting up and getting to capital planning, a capital planning budget, that would be, you know, a first for, for the town for some time. And so with that, you know, would be some additional costs there as well, that would be, you know, incorporated. that would be, you know, incorporated into the budget as well. That would be new.
So I'd kind of like to know from the departments, what are they anticipating for an increase? Like, what's the police department looking for an increase for, you know, for the next fiscal, fiscal '25, this week, '25? What are they anticipating? What's fire department anticipating? Look at what their needs are. Because, yeah, we could say level services again. But, you know, it'd be interesting to see what their recommendations are because the other ones run in their departments. Same thing with highway. What are they looking for increases? Because I know fuel and everything's gone up. I know fuel has gone up. It's kind of leveled off now and come down a little bit. But, you know, other things that are, you know, subscriptions to whatever, software that's being used, you know, what's the increase on that stuff? So it'd kind of be interesting to get an idea of where the departments are standing. What do you think?
Yeah, yeah.
And then we can really look at it and say, okay, well, maybe let's look at a 1%. Or maybe we level service again and say case-by-case basis. What are your thoughts?
Yeah, I think we could, you know, send out a quick email to everybody and have it ready for next meeting. You know, nothing elaborate, just, you know, some basic thoughts and ideas of what departments are looking at. And the board could look at them at the next meeting and, you know, make a determination after that.
You agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're tabling out next meeting?
Yes, table. Okay, Tom's good.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Next thing on the agenda is discussion on possibly supporting Verizon's application to the Massachusetts Broadband Institute for the Broadband Infrastructure Gap Networks Grant Program, anticipated vote. Okay, so what do we got on this one, Mr. Farrar?
Mr. Chairman, I believe we have a representative from Verizon maybe joining us on Zoom. Ellen, is Ellen here?
I am. Good evening.
Sorry about the wait for tonight.
That's all right. It was very interesting.
Well, you're being nice. Thank you.
I grew up in a small town, so I actually found this very interesting.
Even are chasing down the fly?
You gotta keep your sense of humor, you know.
Oh, we have that. All right, so what do we have here?
So the Commonwealth of Massachusetts through the Mass Broadband Institute has $145 million in a grant program. It is the Mass Broadband Institute's Broadband Infrastructure Gap Networks Grant Program, their RFP, that is out right now. What they're doing is they've taken a look at using the FCC maps, National Broadband Maps are the official record, to identify unserved and underserved locations in municipalities across the Commonwealth. The idea is to eliminate the digital bud and serve these locations. Verizon has their own, as you may be aware, their own fiber-to-the-prem network that we have deployed in some communities. What we are proposing to do is file an application. The deadline is 5:00 PM on Monday, actually, to serve the unserved and underserved locations in Warren. By doing that, Warren is served out of two central offices. We would build out those central offices so we could support our fiber network. Since we're doing that, we would build out our FTP fiber-to-the-prem network throughout Warren, not just the unserved and underserved locations. According to the RFP, which I sent to Mr. Farrar, you need to have, I need to have a conversation basically with the municipalities that we plan on filing an application for and receive a letter of support, basically saying you support that we're going to file an application to provide our fiber network throughout Warren and send that in with our application. If we, in order for an application to be eligible to be reviewed for a municipality, and all applications must be filed by municipality, you have to have that letter of support.
Okay.
So we're asking for a letter of support from you tonight so we can file that with an application by the deadline on Monday for a grant to provide our FTP network throughout Warren.
So that would be high-speed internet, like fiber optic?
It would be fiber optic, yes, to every location.
Okay. And is that, is that just in the main part of the town where you're currently providing service? Or?
No, that would be throughout the municipality of Warren.
Well, be careful you say that because my house is very rural. And I would love to have some high-speed internet or any internet at my house. I don't know, you guys are the techie kind of guys. What do you guys think?
If this happens, when do you think it'd happen? And what kind of service are you gonna offer to the residents?
Well, it's, I mean, it's broadband service. It's all about broadband, right? People could get, we could put a voice line over it. We'll support a voice line. Some folks do like to have, still have a landline in their house. Our minimum speed is 300 over 300. And we can give a tier up to a gigabit.
And this will be all residents in town?
We will pass, well, it's up to them whether they want the service, right? So we will pass every prem, so residential folks, small business, if they want the service. By the time we're done, it will be. But however, it takes, it does take a couple of years to build it. We do need to, according to the RFP, if we are awarded it, we have to be substantially completed with our build by the end of 2026.
And physically, what does it mean you're gonna do in our town physically?
So, like I said, we have two central offices that we feed your town out of. So we will basically, right now, we have a copper network and support it in that central office. So we'll have to do a lot of work in the central office to support our fiber network. Once that's done, what we normally do is our engineers will take the town and we'll divide it up into sections, which we call feeder routes. Some people call them nodes. And then we will build out our backbone, and then we will start building out the feeder route. You know, feeder route one, feeder route two, three, I could go on. And that's how we will build until we complete the town. That's how we, that's how we do it. We don't wait until the whole town is done before we light up service. So if we're complete, you know, with feeder route one, you know, we'll light it up. It'll be available for those folks. It'll be up and working. So we will light it up as we go.
And this is, sorry being naive, a wire from post to post or underground? Or how does it work?
Well, that depends how a certain area is fed. Some parts are fed underground, some parts are fed over, are, you know, overhead aerial. I mean, you have, the, exist, I mean, the infrastructure for the poles, we're part, you know, owner of the poles with the power company. You know, that's already there. You know, we already have some infrastructure on the poles, but we would be running fiber.
So is this like, is the FiOS network? Is that what this is?
It is. It is, but it's not, and we won't be, it's not a, we're not doing cable packages or anything like that. This will be for broadband.
Internet.
Just internet.
Internet, correct. Data, yes.
Okay.
That's awesome.
So that'll actually give residents two options because there's some that have the cable and they use it that way. And this would actually give the option for Verizon, too.
Yes.
So this is guaranteed to be in Warren, right? You're actually applying to do this in Warren?
Yes, like I said, Warren, we have to, when you submit an application, you have to submit it per a municipality. So we have to submit in Warren. Our application is specific to Warren.
Do you have a timeline?
For anybody else's.
Yeah, 2026.
Will they be done by '26?
Yeah.
Substantially complete.
Yeah, they could be done a little sooner or later.
I'll bet.
I don't expect it to be done sooner, just to be honest with you. I mean, it's quite a process to build out, I mean, build out a new network. So it does take a little bit of time.
Yeah, but given the opportunity to.
But usually, they're going, it's pretty quick.
Given the opportunity to residents to choose from two companies is a great thing. And if they, I heard they're gonna go even to your house. So that's a good thing.
You have to see that one.
That's 2028.
So with this, is it gonna cost us any money to do this?
The town.
The town.
Not the town, no, not the town. It will not cost you any money.
It just costs, when somebody signs up, they pay for subscription to it.
Whatever service, whatever speed they want, right, whatever tier.
But it's not costing the town any money to authorize you to go for this and do this?
No, so we're funded for a grant. It won't, obviously, it's for part of the build, we cover the rest of it. We have to match whatever we're given in the grant, and then we pay the additional to build out.
Okay. So what do you guys think?
I think it's probably a good thing.
Gives us more options. Gives residents more options to choose from Verizon and Comcast.
And you're definitely gonna target the underserved, so like David's saying, he lives off in the boonies.
Okay.
If you're an unserved.
They're not running into my house, believe me.
No, they've got to.
We're unserved, the unserved and underserved, that's in the application. We have, you have to show, you know, yes, you're buying, you're going to that location, buy it to the next location, yes, there, it's all plotted out, those actual locations that would be, that are considered unserved and underserved.
What, the no-served at all?
That includes your debt.
That's the answer.
So what do you think? Good?
I think I'm good to support that.
You have any questions, bud?
I think it's really no risk for the town, and it provides an opportunity for some competition in town.
It's costing us no money, and it gives us, our residents, another option for high-speed internet.
Or the only option. Or the only option in some places.
Anybody from the public have any questions, bud? Joe?
I already have Verizon hardwired phone and internet.
Okay. There you go. So do a motion.
Make a motion to support Verizon's application to the Massachusetts Broadband Institute for the Broadband Infrastructure Gap Networks Grant Program.
And authorize Mr. Farrar to sign it.
And authorize Mr. Farrar to sign.
Second?
All in favor?
Rich Ihawker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. You have our support.
Thank you very much.
Ellen, I'll email you that tonight for you, okay?
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Everyone have a nice holiday and season by the way.
Thank you, you also. Okay. Next thing, discussion on possibly, that's what we already did. So we're on warrants and bills.
All right, you double-check these because I have not double-checked them. All right, I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants. Payroll number 25, $56,383.01. Vendor number 27, $1,244,861.75.
That's because of the tractor, right?
No.
That's why it's so high.
Second?
All in favor?
Rich Ihawker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Bills?
Make a motion to pay the following bills. Northeast IT, $4,009.18. BG Mechanical Service, $902.50. WB Mason, $80.97. Myrick and O'Connell, $21,295.16. Modern, you saw the spelling on that one? Modern Pest, $100. C2MA Adams, $1,307.57. Verizon, $143.35. Firefighting Equipment, $107. Dave Johnson, Constable, $30.
Second?
All in favor?
Rich Ihawker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. And I make a motion to reimburse Joyce Ihawker for Zoom bill in the amount of $16.99.
Second?
All in favor?
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously with Mr. Ihawker recusing himself.
I recuse myself.
There you go. All right. Minutes, no minutes due to getting the CD and class licenses out. Town administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have a brief report today, just to report on a few things from last week. Today, actually, we had Tech Time Architects come in, we had a meeting with Police Chief Mallett, Fire Chief LaHoy, myself, and Jeff from Tech Time. He's come up with some different drawings and some drawings and some schematics. And he's still working on site locations and doing some of his investigative work. There is some additional supporting information that we will be coming to the board for you to review. He has, would like to come to the board on the January 11th meeting at 6:00 to discuss what progress we have made so far in this process and to bring the board completely up to date on that progress. He would like to reserve that, you know, that meeting for a good chunk of that time. But I thought the meeting.
Which day?
January 11th.
Okay, yeah.
At 6:00. And he'll be here in person. But I thought the meeting went very well today. From that meeting, we met later this afternoon with Highway Supervisor Jeremy Olson to talk about some of the challenges on two potential locations next to his facility and to see what type of scenarios or areas in which that he would need support on in order to make those potential sites work. And so that will be brought before the board very shortly with all that information. I have been in contact with Mr. Duff. He would like to come at the next meeting to give the board an update on operations of Quavoag, to also talk about some capital needs that he would like to see get addressed during the budget cycle. And he will be here at the next meeting at 6:45. And I know that Karen has been sending around some information. The negotiations between Comcast and the town have been going very smoothly with Attorney Blake and with Cable Advisory. I know Travis had submitted, you know, a pretty lengthy list of things that he would like to see if could potentially be included in the negotiations. And I know that Jeff has been working with Comcast on addressing those. And we should. And we should be having somewhat of a of a final um, final uh pitch uh document by the end of this week, I was told. Uh, maybe by tomorrow, um, or early next week, latest. Uh, and they would like to see if 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 possible to get a hearing done by the end of the year. Uh, it is uh going up against time, um, you know, but it is possible. Uh, it it requires a fourteen-day notice. It is possible that a hearing could be held on the twenty-eighth if the board so choose. Uh, but you know, if the, you know, there's, there's, there's instances, when I talked to Jeff, uh, that, you know, you know, that it doesn't get done until after the deadline, you know. We are on, uh, you know, we don't have to, uh, you know, uh, be on their timeframe if the board wants to take some more time. I'm sure we could. Um, you know, that's totally up to the board. But I know that we'll need some guidance if.
Yeah, we'd like to have.
If there's availability.
We're looking at the twenty-eighth off, right?
Yeah, it's Christmas week, right?
Yeah, because everybody wants to spend time with their families and, you know, if we could have the twenty-eighth off. I know you guys wanna work us to death, but give us some time.
And like you said, it's our timetable, not theirs, so we can choose.
Let's do it in January.
Okay.
So January fourth, then, since we already have the eleventh.
Yeah.
For Tech Time.
Yeah. Let's take the twenty-eighth off. Don't schedule anything on the twenty-eighth.
Got it.
You good with that?
Yeah, I was going to Florida, but it got canceled.
You're going to Florida?
It got canceled.
And you weren't taking any of us. Let's see how you are. All right. Anything else?
Um, so i- if if January fourth is definitely the date, we can then prepare for that. Is that, is that what, is that?
Yeah, I'd be, I'm good with that.
I'm good.
I'm good. Yeah, we're all around.
Um, I will, um, I'll let Jeff know and and Comcast know that, you know, that we'll have it on that day. Comcast will be here to make the presentation.
Make sure we advertise it?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and um.
Well, is Travis gonna be available on January? Well, I hope so. Travis, you gonna be available for January fourth?
Just nod.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
They confirmed yes.
Uh, obviously, uh, we had uh, we we had our our tax classification hearing this week. Um, that went very well. Uh, we had uh, two days later in record time, uh, the Department of Revenue came back, um, certified our rate, our ratings.
Are you ready to announce this, though?
Oh, uh, it was part of my report. You wanted to announce it later?
We, we, well, you know, very proud of this. It's actually gone down. And if you wanna, you worked hard, go ahead.
No, it's, no, no, it's, it has nothing to do with me. Uh, you know, it's.
It's the state?
It's the state and and how the numbers uh came about, but the, the official tax rate uh for FY uh twenty-four will be uh fifteen dollars and seven cents. So that will be a decrease of uh seventy-three cents.
So the taxes went down seventy-three cents.
Well, the the rate went down.
The rate.
The rate went down.
Yes, the rate. The tax rate went down seventy-three cents um per thousand.
Yeah.
So. So that's good. Going in the right direction.
Yeah, you know, the, the.
And that actually, because two thousand twenty-two was what? Two thousand twenty-two was, was it fifteen fifty-six? And then it went to fifteen eighty?
Right.
So we actually caught up on our going down.
Caught up on our going down?
Well, yeah, we wanna go down. We don't wanna be going up on our tax rate, so.
The values did go up um because of market conditions.
But that's good. Means your property is worth more. All right. Very good. Anything else?
Um, no, we're, we're, uh, to, uh, this week, we also had a internal luncheon uh with staff uh to uh, you know, formally uh send off our our town accountant, uh, the retirement of our uh tax collector, uh, the uh retirement of our uh Veterans Agent, uh, and Jessica, who's gonna be on maternity leave. Uh, and we are also, uh, during that, we we had, um, we had a luncheon internally. Uh, and our new Veterans Agent also started this week. She started on, on that that same day, Wednesday this week. So her office hours are Wednesdays now from.
Eleven to three.
Eleven to three. Eleven to three. So if anybody uh from the public, you know, uh, wants to come in or or call in or email, uh, she is available uh from eleven to three every Wednesday uh in Town Hall.
And she is feisty. She's good.
And her email address is Vectren, no S, agent at Warren hyphen MA dot com.
Okay. And we get, we get that on the website?
On the website.
Okay. All right, very good.
Small, uh, yes, a small comment about the uh rate tax. In twenty sixteen, we were at nineteen point eighty-four.
Mm-hmm.
And it's coming down eighteen, seventeen, fifteen, fifteen ninety-six, fifteen fifty-six, and now fifteen zero seven?
Yep. Fifteen oh seven.
Very good.
Property values are going up, tax rates coming down. Towns got everything? Did you take possession of your new cruiser?
No, it's being built out. So we took the old and take all the.
So it's like the last one, right? After that, you you got a whole new fleet?
Yeah, pretty much.
But let me tell you, I, I pick on the new fire truck.
Oh, yeah?
It's a monster.
Monster truck?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that, that thing, yeah, the Bush one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's beautiful.
It is, yeah.
Did you get to drive it? Almost. I was like this.
Just slide right into that driver's seat?
You just let me saw it and, you know, he said, you can take a picture, that's it.
Go touch it.
It's normal, ever.
Still new. Well, beautiful vehicles. All right. Um, so Towns doing good?
Tomorrow, um, we, um, the Assistant Town Accountant will be coming in, uh, doing some training of, uh, starting her, her, uh, her more preschool uh on Monday. Uh, but she will be starting to do some training uh tomorrow in the morning. Uh, and then we also, uh, working with the, you know, internally, the Board of Health, uh, in the Clerk's Office, we're gonna be able to, uh, have, uh, while, uh, our normal hours of the Board of Health, um, are now gonna be reduced uh due to an absence. Uh, we will have some additional hours, uh, public hours, um, like, you know, uh, Monday through Wednesday um for an hour, hour and a half, maybe a little bit longer, so that the public, if they needed to come in and fill something out or submit something, um, there will be, um, uh, you know, some time, um, starting uh next week. Uh, we'll be making an announcement with those hours uh formally next week for you.
Okay. Very good. Um, anything else, sir?
No, that's good.
Did you have anything for him?
I had a thought, that went away, so.
Don't come back.
Yeah.
When you're home.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions, man?
No, sir.
Very good, good job. Um, you know, very happy to see everything. Everything is going well. It's great to see the tax rate going down. That's very exciting. Um, and we're getting everything done. Infrastructure's being upgraded as far as like all new vehicles, Highway Department's upgrading vehicles. And we're still going down.
Hey, we may, we may even get Fios and things.
Yeah, and we might get Fios. At no cost to us for the town.
Yeah.
So upgrading that. So we're doing good. I'm happy. No, we went past now. We'll cause that. Go ahead.
Um, resumes for Town Account, still getting?
So, um, those will be going out. Um, we said maybe the fifteenth, we were gonna get that posted because we wanted it to lap over the new year.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, um, that will be, uh, that will be going out probably on the fifteenth.
Okay, okay.
We did start our initial review of uh resumes. I I sat with uh a Chairperson Levine uh for the uh Sewer. Uh, you know, we've, I've already reached out to a few uh potential people that, you know, that were interested. Uh, but dude, uh, you know, there's so many people that think we're in Warren, Rhode Island. So, uh, you know, this is Warren, Mass. So, um, when I had somebody apply from Somerset and they said, well, you know, it's only about a twenty-minute drive. I says, twenty-minute drive?
How fast can you drive?
I said, well, you know, I said, do you know that this is Warren, Mass? Oh, I thought this was Warren, Rhode Island. Oh, I'm not interested in the position. So, and then we had somebody that was interested in, from, um, Alaska, believe it or not. Uh, and, um, you know, but they were originally from Pittsfield, um, and, um, wa- was thinking about relocating to the area, but you, you know, um, the pay was, you know, significantly less than what they were paying in Alaska, so, um, yeah.
Can't compete with Alaska.
No.
So.
Don't even try.
They also get those oil, it's the oil stipends too.
Yeah.
They get those. For be, just being a resident, you get an oil stipend. So you get a percentage, yeah.
So it's, it's, uh, we're gonna have to do a second round of of looking out and we still have it posted. Um, so, you know, if anybody's interested in in, you know, submitting, um, you know, applications, please, uh, continue to do so. Uh, the first round, we were focusing in on people that have licenses, those, you know, people who who have licenses. So, um, we may have to go down to the next year from there.
So we didn't really. Okay. It's a tough job to fill.
Very tough.
We've said that a few times. You're looking at a career. I know it's not glorious, but wastewater treatment plant.
Lots of demand.
Lots of demand.
Nice small town to work in.
Yeah.
There's room to move out.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Better than moving down, right?
Except for the tax.
Anyway, I went down. Yes, except for the tax rate. All right, uh, anything else for him?
No.
No? Okay. Maybe you had nothing else?
For him? I'm, I'm good. I'm very happy with him.
Very. All right. Um, very good. All right, now, next thing. Um, new business. We had the tax rate. We got that. And levy limit.
Levy limit is paperclip to right behind these tax, right?
Okay. Did you have any questions about that? We already talked about the tax rate. It's gonna be fifteen oh seven. We're good?
So our levy limit went up roughly five hundred thousand?
I'd say it's about the same.
Well, it went, went, went from like nine two five seven to nine seven two nine, right?
Yeah, right. Yeah, but the capacity is, is similar.
Where's capacity?
Well, if you take, um, so the, uh, the allowable levy is nine point, uh, seven six three four six seven, the bottom number. And then you go on to the page one of the tax, uh, rate recapitulation form, um, and go to, uh, C where it says tax levy. So if you take the, uh, the maximum allowable levy minus the, uh, the tax and the actual tax levy, um, it's almost a million dollars.
Any other questions? Do you have any question, man?
Yeah, what, what does this means?
So, I mean, you have some room, you know. There's a room to grow.
What, what is it?
I'm, I'm. I'm lost.
So we can only raise taxes as much as our levy?
Right.
Which is, okay, so our, is that a levy limit?
So we're not talking about that thing in Warren?
No, no.
Okay, okay.
Just taxes, see? Different levy. So we have room to go up on our taxes.
Yes.
We're not looking at a two-and-a-half override.
No, no.
There's no need for one.
No.
So.
Okay.
Good?
Yeah.
All right. All right. So, old business. Anybody have any old business?
No, sir.
Okay, old business?
All right, I'll ask about the grit screw.
So, um, it's, uh, it's in. Uh, I believe they're finishing up with some, uh, modifications to it. And I believe they were, the last I was there, uh, they were having the electrician come in and and actually hook it up. It's not fully functional as of yet. Maybe it could have been as of today, uh, later on in the staff to do. It may be, may be available, uh, tomorrow.
Okay.
And Ralph is due back on Monday.
Oh, yeah, all right.
Anything else?
No.
Do you have any news?
No, sir.
Okay. Correspondence, Town Clerk received a letter confirming the motion to allow Stephen Perkins to extend his time in service. So we got that back from, uh, represented by Todd Smola and Jake Olivera. And when are they looking at doing that?
So the bill has been filed. It's just got, it's gotta do, do its due course at the, at the House of the Senate.
Okay.
Yeah, the Town Clerk just wanted you to know that she has gotten response back to it.
And you guys let Adam know?
Yes, I did forward a copy, stand here, to let him know the bill has been filed. I will follow up with Rep. Smola, uh, next week, just to see if he's got an estimated timeframe.
Okay. Very good. Um, and then, another correspondence, Modern Pest Services increasing their fee uh for the old Town Hall from one hundred to one hundred and eight dollars. Okay.
A month.
Yeah, it's a month.
Eight percent?
Poison costs money?
Yeah.
Keeping the rodents out of there.
Is it effective?
Oh, uh.
Are they getting rid of the rodents?
I think so, yeah.
Have you seen any?
I have one in the basement. No, not since that rat picture I sent you.
So they're doing their job?
Yeah.
Yeah, here, we got a clean bill of health. No sign of any rats or mice in our building.
Right now is the time where they all start coming in too. Once it starts getting cold and they're looking for that warmth. So we'll probably see some activity in the buildings the next month or so. And then after that.
Is this cheaper than cat food?
Ha, nah, no. I made them search out. They were using poison a lot. And the station smelled like a dead mouse all the time.
Oh.
So they, they put the.
The stickies?
Yeah, they put stickies and actual traps.
I have act, I have actual stickies if you need them.
Yeah, they left some for us too. But, yeah, I, I couldn't take the poison anymore. Every week it was just, for days, it smelled like a dead animal.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Didn't say, you know, get one of those candles or something like that in there, but no.
It didn't work.
All right. Um, was there any other correspondence? Did you have any correspondence from anybody?
No, sir.
Did you?
No.
That was it? No more?
Yeah, one more.
Violent protection.
DOT.
Oh, DOT letter about diesel oil release on mile marker sixty-nine point two eastbound. And that's on the pipe, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's nothing we can do about that. That's them.
They just wanted to let you know.
Yep. How much was it? Seventy gallons? Jeez. Jeez. Okay. Well, environmental protection is handling it, so.
Right, and this is to the company that did the spill, so they need to clean it up.
Yep.
All right, well.
Got to clean it up. All right. So comments and concerns, anybody have any comments and concerns?
No.
I have a few comments.
All right.
Just information, on November ninth, the Quavo did a act for the Veterans Day and it was very nice to be there and have, see, see the kids do, you know, show that respect for the veterans. I think it was a very nice activity. On November twenty, the act, we saw Rich and Mr. Farrell were there at the Quavo Fire Academy. They did a presentation to it and they, they showed us all the, the kids were there and they, they gave us a, a presentation of what they do and everything. It was, I think it was very nice. On November twenty-second, it was the Shane Douglas Memorial, very special for one of the families who lost their kid. And it was the last football game of the season against Ware. On, and finally, in December twenties, December second, we had the tree lighting, which was very nice. We had a lot of people show up and I think it was a kudos to the fire department.
Yeah. And I have to say, December second.
Parks Department.
The, the tree lighting was awesome. It was, gets bigger and bigger every year. Every, Parks Department did an amazing job. Definitely got my praise on that, they did great. Also, everybody else stepped up. Police Department was there, making sure the bridge didn't get out of hand. They were also filling up, you know, was it Phil Cruiser?
Yeah, but we had Jimmy's trailer.
Yeah, so Phil Cruiser with toys and stuff. And I seen a, a woman with a gentleman, I don't know if they were a married couple, strolling up with a big trolley full of toys to bring in there. And I'm like, wow, that's great to see.
With a family at the end come pull up with their SUV, the entire dock was full.
Oh, my gosh. Wow, that's awesome. Guys did good?
Yep.
Very good. And then the fire department was selling wreaths and they sold, was it twenty wreaths or thirty?
I know they sold out.
Yeah, they sold out like right in the morning, before, before they even got there, right? So they, they did amazing. And it, more vendors. And I seen a lot of people going in and out of the businesses, helping these businesses and buying stuff. I know my wife went into the new, the art place there. I always forget the name, I'm sorry.
Lost Art.
The Lost Art. And she bought a whole bunch of stuff in there. I had to pull her out of there because she was buying up the store. I like, but they had a lot of nice stuff and it's good to see everybody supporting the businesses in the town, in the community and seeing all that happening. And it was great to get on to the carriage ride with the horses and my kids absolutely loved doing that and cooking the smores and it's a great event, really good event. But good job, everybody. Highway Department did great, Parks Department, police, fire, everybody that participated in it. Amazing job and let's keep on doing it and make it bigger next year.
Recognize CERT because they, they did help a lot with the traffic.
CERT did an awesome job, yeah. I, I always forget them, thank you very much for reminding me because CERT plays a big part in it and they're all volunteers and, you know.
I wouldn't add enough guys to stop traffic if I had everyone there.
They did an amazing job and thank you very much to CERT too. Anybody else?
I think you nailed it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Parks has one more event this year, it's Light the Night.
Yep, Parks have, has Light the Night and that's advertised on the website and it's all over Facebook too. I see everybody sharing that event. So that's another big event. And then we're on to next year, so.
They're already planning that.
They already are, they're hardworking. So thank you very much for all the hard work they did. Did you have anything on that?
No.
Did you have anything else?
I'm good.
Love the pictures too.
Yeah, good pictures there.
Well, I, me and Tammy are trying to figure out how you post a hundred and thirty-five photos at once. Because we, we're only, we only get allowed to do like thirty photos or whatever. She posts a ton of photos. You, you're like photo dropping a hundred and thirty-five photos one, one shot.
The, the hard part is when I go home, I end up with more than three thousand good pictures and I have to choose the best ones.
Yeah, wow.
Problem with digital, just keep taking pictures.
Yeah, they're free.
Great job. Did you have anything to say, Chief?
I don't think so, I nailed it.
All right. So comments and concerns still? You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
You're good? Anything else? I have nothing, I'm good. Anybody from the public have anything? Mr. Conrad?
Well, gentlemen, today's December seventh.
They have it to me.
During World War Two, a little over thirteen million people served in the military. That was about eleven percent of the population. Less than a hundred thousand of them are still alive today. And I'm sorry to say that the lead story on all the national news was not anything about December seventh. We're dealing with a war in Ukraine, the war in Israel. And it appears they've forgotten about Americans, veterans, who are on the dying list. Some of us remember.
Always good to remember all the ones that paid the ultimate price for all of us. You know, what happened Pearl Harbor and everything, should never be forgotten. And it's sad that it's not taking a bigger part of our, our news outlets these days. And unfortunately, you don't really see too much about nine eleven either. People forget quickly.
This was the first year that I was expecting it to be the lead story and it wasn't.
Anything else? Anybody else have anything from the public? Anybody from Zoom have anything? No? Okay, moving on. Next meeting is December fourteenth at six P M. And that's Community Development Advisory Committee. And the regular selectman meeting will be at six forty-five P M. So at six P M. will be the Community Development Advisory Committee with Mr. Chris Dumpty. And that's an update on the school, school street project.
Well, that's for our, our new, our new submission, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Public hearing, yeah.
So everything. And then the regular selectmen's meeting will be at six forty-five P M. on that day. All right, and.
Motion to adjourn, second?
All in favor?
Richard Hacker, aye.
Vinnie? Vinnie's aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously and we are adjourned.